Meeting just started. This is the Wednesday, April 23rd, 2025, Mendon Select Board meeting. Just so everyone knows, this meeting is being recorded. And if you could please stand and join me for the foot. But allegiance to the law. And to the Republic, what it stands, my nation indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So we have, um, do have a public hearing coming up at 6:35. So we may take a couple of things out of order if we can fit them in. But we'll start with item two, which is citizen statements and petitions. There aren't any. Don't see any hands in the room or online. So then I think I will just, uh, let's see, jump ahead to meeting minutes, which we are going to revisit next time so that we have a chance to read through those. We got those. And then, so yeah, so that's item four is some minutes and then item five is also more minutes. Then I think maybe do the awkward waiting thing. What time is it?
You've got some community events.
Oh, it's 6:30. Okay, it's only, it's only 6:32. I think, yeah, the analog clock is a little bit fast, so. Okay, yeah, so let's talk about some community events. So we have item six is community events and we have a few things coming up. So the parade for the Nipmuck youth baseball and Nipmuck youth softball opening day is on April 26th, 2025, and we approved that at a previous meeting. We have the Cultural Council Scavenger Hunt, which will be on May 17th. I believe they've also adjusted their rain date. It says update.
So update, they, um, they've been approved by Public Safety for all, for all their sites. I'm trying to see if we have a rain date.
I don't believe we approved a rain date, but I think.
This is June. But I think we did.
Yeah.
I don't know if changed, but I think we approved the original.
Yeah.
June.
Okay. So, uh, but so we should look to see what the, the rain date is. I think, um, I think they'll have it in their information. Yeah, it was not in the motion when I looked back. It only had the, the date of the, the main event.
Yeah, I don't have a rain date.
So, um, okay, so the update is that they have approval from, uh, from Public Safety. Excellent. Okay. And then, uh, the Mendon Lions Annual Toll Road for Sight, May 17th, nine to 12, where they have a rain date posted here of May 18th, nine to 12. Are there any updates on this one?
Yeah, so, um, we've gone through this a couple of times with, um, the Nipmuck Gridiron Club and Lions, um, this requires Public Safety approval, not a select vote. So that's why I'm voting for a rain date.
Great. And then, of course, the annual town election will be on Tuesday, May 13th, 2025. That will be at, um, Misco Hill School. I believe the hours are 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Does that sound? I think those are the usual hours. It's not listed here, um, but definitely information is posted on the website. Usually there will be a sample ballot posted there as well. So please, everybody do show up and vote there. There are, uh, I think a number of people up for reelection as well as some important ballot questions. So we'll probably talk about those more. Any other comments on the?
You were, you were right on the hours.
Okay, I was right on the hour. So, so yes, so May 13th, 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM at Misco Hills.
6:35. I think we can open, open here.
Okay. So yeah, so then we can go, uh, begin the process of opening the public hearing at 6:35. So I could have a motion to open that?
Sure. I move to open the 6:35 PM public hearing to review the request for permission from Massachusetts Electric Company and Verizon New England Incorporated to locate poles, wires and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way. Install new pole 11-5 for new EV charging station at Clough School, 10 North Ave, number 30975733. Second.
Discussion? Right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Right, so the, um, the public hearing is open. So Jeremy, can you fill us in here?
Yeah, so previously, the Select Board had voted to, um, approve the installation of EV charging station at Clough School, um, since the town owns the, owns the property. Um, and this is the kind of resultant work from that. They need to relocate a pole. So we've, we've got someone, uh, online from Mass Electric, I believe, the 774 number. Is that right?
Yes, hi, this is Al Galvin, design engineer out of Hopeville.
Hi, can you, um, brief us a bit on the, um, what changes are happening as a result of this request?
Sure, the, the, the current existing poles out, out there towards the back end of the lot, where the EV stations are going to be installed are, um, occupied by switching equipment, load brakes, things of that nature. So we determined to install a new intermediate pole and, uh, the customer's riser for the school can come off of that and underground to their new transformer in the property about 100 feet in. And this will be, um, just off the sidewalk, out of the, out of the way of the public, just as the current poles are right, right in line. So it's a pretty easy transfer of the lines above.
Thank you. All right, uh, any questions about that? I believe we also have information in our packet of this. This is hearing, I also will open this up to, uh, questions or comments from, uh, from the room?
Yes. They had to turn on a national grid. They meant to send us to a relocation, so the, that goes with this is going to happen in two meetings.
Okay.
So there's two.
So there will be, so this will be, but we'll finish with this hearing and then have a second hearing about a second poll?
Yes.
Is that correct? Okay, okay, thank you for that. Any other, uh, comments or, yes?
So my only question is, you know, that, so you're going to have to dig underground. Is this happening, uh, when schools in session or out, outside of school hours? That's not listed up.
Right, right, I, I don't have the, the schedule. They, they, I don't have the schedule in front of me or anything like that, but typically they'll do it in off-hours, even sometimes overnight if they have to. You know, um, they'll, they'll work it out with the customer so the school can work with the crew lead on what, uh, what day works best. So that's how, that's how they'll go, they'll go about that. And then, of course, it's, it's all courted off with, um, you know, the safety procedures and, and police detail if necessary on the street, things of that nature.
Thank you. How long does the process usually take?
Well, as far as the poll, I mean, National Grid is just doing the poll and then tying it into the lines above. That portion of it is, is pretty quick, you know, within a probably few hours to, you know, set it and, and things of that nature, uh, maybe like a half a day or something. But, um, then the rest of it's on, on the school side. They'll, they'll do their, they'll do their trenching and all of that. And then National Grid can, uh, run our primary cables in that trench once, once inspected and approved. So, you know, the whole process, depending on if, you know, assuming everything runs smoothly, there's no complications, should probably like a day or something like that.
And is the plan, since we know there will be a second poll hearing, is the plan to do both polls at the same, on the same schedule?
I, I don't have any information on the relocation one. Uh, I just got this new one for the transformer. If, so I'm not even sure which poles are being moved, to be honest with you, because it's not a part of this paperwork. If it's, if it's a neighboring poles, one of them, um, they both had, I think they both had, if last I looked, was a, some, uh, large equipment on it, you know, currently switches and things of that nature. So I'm not sure if that's the poles that are being moved or if it's another one further down. But if there is one that's, you know, right there, they'll probably do their best to, to, um, you know, do it all at once, kind of work it into the job. But if it's, you know, three poles down, you know, it might have to be broken up. So it really just comes down to which poles we're talking about.
So we'll know more in a couple of weeks. Thank you.
Yeah, right, right.
Any other, other questions? And I would entertain a motion to close the hearing.
I move to close the 6:35 PM public hearing.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so then I will be looking for a motion to approve or decline the request.
I move to approve the request for permission from Massachusetts Electric Company and Verizon New England Incorporated to locate poles, wires and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way. Install new pole 11-5 for a new EV charging station at Clough School, comma 10 North Ave, number, number 30975733.
Second.
Discussion?
So, uh, Select Board Baroli, um, mentioned to me, is it Mass Electric, National Grid? On the open meeting, it says National Grid. In our motion, it says Mass Electric. Are they the same company? Does it matter?
Mass, Mass Electric became National Grid, uh, but in, in some.
So we can use those names.
So the name's interchangeable?
I mean, we go by, yeah, essentially. I, I'm not sure how it's, you know, as far as legality goes or documentation, things of that nature. But we've, we've heard, we've heard, yeah, we've heard so many people refer to both. But we, we go by National Electric, National Grid Electric Company. Yeah, it's kind of similar to the Rhode Island, Rhode Island now, as both Rhode Island Energy and PPL.
Great, good question, thank you. Any, any discussion? Okay, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for joining us, thank you for your time and, uh,
All right.
Get that new pole.
Thank you very much.
Have a good one.
All right. You too, bye.
So, uh, great, so next. Around, so we did get through the community events. So I believe next up is appointments, item seven. So, uh, Jeremy, can you fill us in?
Yeah, so, um, we've had a vacancy in the administrative assistant position at Council on Aging. Uh, went through recruitment process, um, and, um, the, the hiring team has made a, a recommendation. Who, Shawna has joined us here tonight with some COA folks, so I invite you, invite you up to the table. Remind the board that this position is an 18-hour a week position. The board recommended to town meeting, but town meeting has yet to, uh, not have been approved, uh, additional hours to make this a full-time position in fiscal '26. So what the appointment will be now is to an 18-hour a week position. Um, and then should funding be successful at town meeting, um, come July 1st, this will become a 32, 32 hours, partially, partially funded through, um,
Grant statement?
Yeah, the state entitlement grant and then nine additional hours through the, um, through the general fund. Turn it over to, to me to interview.
From the Council on Aging and on your, so thrilled to have this position and we failed with the, they had burned for some time. Shawna was the best candidate with the 10 years of administrative assistant experience, folks' experience and, um, with some of that being in a senior, um, senior facility. And, uh, definitely hoping that, I don't know, depends the background check that completed.
So the motion will be pending a successful background check. And I have Chief Kersey.
Detective Mason's working on it. I told her she could go for it.
Okay.
Just maybe for her.
Jennifer, Jen actually has her own panel.
Oh, okay, uh, Jen.
HR coordinator.
Sorry, I didn't, uh, I didn't see Chief Kersey there. I just wanted to let you know, I did send an email to Detective Mason a little while ago to see if there were any updates, um, but I'll check again tomorrow. I'm, I'm not anticipating anything based on some emails I got back from her last, um, earlier in the week.
Great, thank you.
We assume you're really enthusiastic and excited about joining Mendon?
So if you, uh, were you able to visit the senior center? Did you have the interview there?
Or a second interview?
Secondary interview there, yes. Great.
She had, actually you had the same impression, at least, I think, which I explained that I had. Many years ago, walking in, it's just such a warm atmosphere. It is, it's very, very, very similar.
Any questions? And I would.
Welcome, thank you for applying and hope you enjoy it.
And I too, I wanted to say thank you for your support for making this position full-time. And while it's come in fiscal year, it's just, it's going to be a great remove to our, to our staff, to myself, to my board, who've pitched in, who are tired of this league stuff.
Fingers crossed that it all goes successfully at town meeting, because it is up to the voters. But yes, we, but, uh, it has our support. So, and I think, yeah, I know it's been, had a few people in this position. Now for the past, so looking forward to having you here for a long time. So I, uh, any other questions or comments? So I'd be looking for a motion.
I move to approve the appointment of Shawna Simperio as administrative assistant for the Council on Aging at a rate of $21.83 an hour for 18 hours. Thanks. I need successful background.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you.
Welcome to the family.
Sitting here, trying to make one comment. Please do, looking for nominations for Senior Citizen of the Year.
Oh, I.
Such issue first. Okay, just wanted to bring it up there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I'm sure I'll see you soon. Then we also have, uh, some potential appointments for poll workers for the 2025 election cycle. Have anyone?
So, uh, so for poll workers, um, for the, for the May election, um, there are some point, individuals, many, if not all of them, have worked elections for work. Um, and the recommendation for appointment comes from Townsler, who is the election. I don't have resumes for those folks, uh, but we have, we have a task list.
Yes, right, there's a list.
Does the motion have to include anything for ethics or is that separate?
These folks are not subject to.
Ethics laws?
And then if somebody has a family member on the list? Close that.
Yeah, I have a family member.
Yeah, I, I believe, um, you might have this similar situation disclosing of that. You don't have to abstain from the vote, even pointing that person, but disclosing that ahead of time is.
Consider this me disclosing that ahead of time, my wife is on the list.
Anybody else?
That could be part of the problem.
That would be.
To be clear.
I think when they got to the last name part, though, you know.
My wife did not have my last name.
You never know.
Yeah. Actually, I know a lot of these people, they are not family members, in fact. No, I think probably most of them. So I, I should make an effort to, to get to know the ones that I don't know. So any other, uh, information on this?
I know this, this is for the 2025 election cycle, um, should we have?
Right, so I guess I would be looking for a motion.
All right. I move to approve the appointment of the following people as poll workers for the 2025 election cycle. Carol Cook, Ruth O'Grady, Jeff Crowson, Wayne Phipps, Anne Vanersluis, Barbara Goddard, Peg Tatro, Kathleen Alexander, Nancy Flurry, Nancy Phipps, Alison Chu, Sue Edmondson, Lisa Michael, Kellya Abbott, Robin Lander, Carol Sari, Cheryl Lemon and Diane Howell.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, great, so we have now our set of poll workers. I did not actually count the number. Is a number greater than 10?
Yeah.
Somewhere between 10 and 20, but yeah. Um, great.
18.
Is it, okay. All right, so then, um, so number eight is a presentation from the Capital Planning Committee. Are we, do we have?
Close, am I here for that? Yes. Oh, I'll kick it off.
Okay.
Um, so as the board is aware, um, you all appointed, um, Phil Sibley, James Statch and Jesse Curl to the Capital Planning Committee.
Okay.
We still have two vacancies on our Capital Planning Committee. So, um, we're looking for volunteers. Katie came up with the idea earlier today to get a closer perspective of volunteers needed and place it at town meeting, have a little key marker about vacancies and looking for who are. So, so.
Great eyes, yep.
Any, any folks who come to town meeting and, you know, plan about the operations of government, we'd love for you to come and join and, uh, and, and help us, help us improve whatever, whatever it is you're concerned with. So, um, the Capital Planning Committee has been a, a working group of, um, staff and volunteers for the last few fiscal years. What I pulled up here, um, is just the kind of data we're collecting. So we collect, um, uh, you know, names of, you know, the, the title of the project, where it's from, who's, who's sponsoring it, costs, um, and then a little bit of rationale and where it falls in, in, in the circle. So, you know, we have the Street Sweeper here, um, it's, it's been appropriated. It's actually been purchased and used, it's been on the road. Great, um, so, um, we go through all of these things. We have, um, we have a fleet inventory about, um, estimated, uh, costs, about the current mileage, the condition, when we think we're going to need to replace them. To remind folks, we're looking at things, um, with a, sorry, threshold of $25,000 as a capital, $25,000 or more. So as we look at smaller items, right, if we need to replace a door, you know, some windows or something, we, we do that for our building maintenance through the operational budget, uh, or a bunch of chairs, senior center. But when we look at stuff like self-tape breathing apparatus, right, we, yeah, we need to do that across many years. So the, the committee has, like I said, has been an informal working group. Um, now that we're, um, established, I'll, I'll work with committee members to host our first, well, public meeting in the coming weeks. And the anticipation is that capital will greatly preempt the, uh, yearly operating budget cycle. So we will be looking, you know, in the September, October timeframe to have folks, have department heads submit their capital requests. And what I think is important, um, for, uh, the, the committee and, you know, my office to communicate to department heads is that it's, it's not just what you need in the next six months. We need to know your capital inventory and stuff that's on the, you know, five-year horizon, seven-year horizon, these sad things, so we can, um, continue to evaluate, comparatively, uh, across a, across a life cycle, rather than saying, what is it that we need this year? And that's the main charge of the committee, to have long-range thinking, long-range planning. I remember when free cash was certified in the fall that, um, you know, the board and FinCom were surprised at the level. The, the comment I got from multiple corners of town government was, we don't like surprises, right? Like this, this is good news, but, you know, we want to be read in on stuff like this. And, um, I think capital is a lot the same way, that it's necessary and expected that we're going to spend hundreds of thousands and millions of dollars and stuff, uh, but I can't come out of nowhere and that's what this committee is, is charged for. So let's fill, fill in any, fill in any gaps? Do you want to talk about any part of the process that you think I?
Biggest thing I found in the past few years, it does set the stage for us to look at future years and our commitments. And hopefully develop that to meeting that's now its charter of goals, but also set clear priorities. Probably we add about being here for 40 some years, it was a surprise. But broke now. And hopefully it'll get away from us, thank you, you know, steady firing session. So, look forward to working, continue to work on.
And I will say, uh, Select Board member Goddard has done a great job, uh, supporting this working group, getting most of this share point up and the data and, and getting this process, um, off the ground, so.
I just want to reemphasize what Jeremy said about the timing. So two years ago, we were, we rushed to have the ATM, it was a 60-day window. We've been able to dial that back to where we were actually probably had a five-to-six-month operating window, but the working group put together a process which actually kicks off in July. So to all the department heads out there, you'll actually be asked for your capital needs and hopefully most of them are captured, any new ones that come in for the operating budget, that'll be, end up be asked in July. You have a 12-month window for the committee to assess and meet with the department heads to understand what the, what the need is, the priority, things like that.
And part of that, too, will be refreshing a lot of this. So someone asked that question, FinCom. So there's a request at town meeting to appropriate $50,000 of free cash, to pay for self-tape breathing apparatus in five years from now, that will anticipate accounts, $250,000. Like, well, we think it's $250,000 now, is it actually going to come? It's going to be $300,000 in five years? Well, maybe, so when we come through this process this next coming year, we say, well, now we think it's going to be $260,000. So it's, it's not just additive, it's also going back and refreshing our prior assumptions. And the fleet, the fleet inventory is really important, um, as we go through, as we go through this. The waterfall effect about, you know, Council, uh, Council on Aging left here, but we've got an administrative vehicle and fire right now that would be, I think is a great candidate to be surplus to Council on Aging. So when they have the kind of local one-person appointments that they're providing transportation to, they're not firing up the 14-passenger van every time to do it.
Cost effective, especially in life, usually.
And so being able to kind of plan for that ahead of time, um, is useful. And then, um, we also use lists like this when we do, in Project National Grid right now, about, you know, fleet advisory, sorts of things, like how do we, um, how do we smartly and, and pick which individual things make sense to electrify as we go through our replacement schedule? So having this sort of thing, what yearly mileage is, what, you know, what our expected replacement is, helps inform those sorts of decisions.
Is there, um, and I hesitate, I don't want to create any precedent when I say what I'm about to say, but is there, is there precedent, um, to present like a simplified view of this or like to the town, like a, yeah, like a top 20 list or something? Because I heard right there, like, you know, it'd be nice if there weren't surprises at town meeting, but that goes for the public too, right?
Well, I, I think this gets to the, what we've talked about in terms of a business update, a capital plan. I mean, there's a one-page summary that we talked about last year, where we showed the, the operating budget and the specifics. And then through the prioritization process that the working group used, there was actually a stacked ranked list of all projects in queue and where they fall relative to each other, but doesn't necessarily denote when it's going to be done, but sort of understands sort of.
No, but that it's, that it's on someone's mind and that it's a big deal.
So the medium-term goal is to formalize this, you see, or this is, this is the capital, this is the CIV, this is the capital improvement program for the town of Mendon. Here's everything and then here's our priority one, priority two, priority three. And it gets, it's, it's kind of fucking messy, sort of stuff.
I mean, I envision a look back and a look forward. So if our ATM, annual time meeting this spring, it would be good to see what, what.
You mean like CIV priorities?
What was our, what was our capital investment this past year? And what are, what are we looking forward to our next year? You know, the two-page or something like that.
I could see a few things that are already purchased.
So you said, uh, the first, first meeting being coming up, is that, will that be after ATM?
Yeah. Uh, yeah, and, uh, one member's traveling abroad right now and, uh, so we could try. So we'll, uh, we'll schedule when he gets back, uh, but in the coming weeks.
Great.
And then we'll appoint a select one, be as well.
I think we actually did, so we'll have to renew it for next fiscal year.
That's where we will, right?
And just for the Select Board to understand, policy and procedure associated with the capital plan is going to be incorporated into the financial policy document that we have on our queue.
Yeah, so it'll, it'll be on a cadence and not like ad hoc expected, you know, part of the department has just dropped stuff in.
Yeah, no, it, it's outlined in terms of calendar demarcations when expected things.
That's great.
And that was what they're going to do.
Yeah, and that's perfect, that, that's the way to guarantee it, outlives all of us. Go.
But I think an important point you talked about is that we're just an advisory group that'll help get this through. Departments really know what their needs are, they really represent their priorities. So without a governing body that says you do this, do this, and do that, it's just a formulation to help us through. So without a governing body that says you do this, do this, and do that, it's just a formulation to help us through our times with the capital stuff.
Yeah, we appreciate you being the algorithm, makes it easier.
We're looking forward to seeing, uh, what comes of this, whatever that, those reports come out. So, yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Phil.
Okay, so, uh, nine is a discussion regarding a special permit application from the nineteen-twenty-six committee to host a weekend event at Tinman Hill.
Yeah, so, I will speak briefly on this. I'm yelling it to myself in my head, um, so, uh, that's how I read it. Uh, on May nineteenth, I'm going to be meeting with chief and highway surveyor, um, and, uh, chairman or, uh, select board member Maroli, and, uh, I invited the town administrator, um, but I haven't checked if he accepted, so, under the, under the spot now. Uh, so he'll be there as well, and so, uh, what we want to talk about is, uh, scouting. It's going to be a hundred years of scouting in, in, uh, Mendon, uh, nineteen-twenty-six, uh, to twenty-twenty-six, and so we put together a committee of people, scouters around the area, um, and have involved the local district and all that good stuff. And one of the things we would like to do is have a campery for this event, which would be like all of the scouts in Mendon and greater Mendon. Um, and, uh, so we, we would like to ask for a special permit for this operation. But before we do that, before we actually ask, we want to have all the, like, logistics answered by public safety and highway. Why highway? Because highway uses those barns up there, there's utilities up there, there's things we might be able to use to host a large amount of people uh, uh, for camping for the weekend. Um, and we'd like to also bring in historical and make it a nice town event, um, because scouts and the town community has been together, kind of working together for the last hundred-plus years, so we want to kind of do that, celebrate that. And, uh, so, before we talk more about the details, I'd like to talk about it with public safety and highway, and then come back here after that meeting, um, and give you the full details, uh, of what we're thinking, logistics, maps, all the stuff you'll really need to make a good decision, um, so that's what this is about. And, um, and Katie didn't know I hadn't yet scheduled the meeting, so I'm a little behind.
And so this is Veterans Day of twenty-twenty-six.
So, that would be our target, yeah, about a year and a half from now. Uh, we started talking about this, uh, in the fall, so we're trying to make sure we have plenty of time. Uh, we just got support from the, uh, the, the local scouting districts, like official support. So, we're now looking forward to looking for support from this board. So those are my, those are my brief details.
So we would potentially vote on this, uh, once the. Any questions or comments on this?
Thank you for doing that, it's great.
It's a lot of fun, so it's, I don't want to say that this is any sort of work, I, I, I enjoy it, as I'm sure Mike does as well, just being around the scouters again and doing stuff for the community, it's always fun.
Great, thank you. So, uh, ten is, uh, discuss warrant articles. Um, so, I suggested that we have this back on just because we had not voted. There was one article that we had not voted on, we were waiting to see about, um, specifically about the BBT stabilization fund. We were waiting for some more information. And, but Jeremy sent us the link to the, the FinCom meeting where it was discussed. Uh, can, can you fill us in a little bit, Jeremy?
Yeah, I was looking to fill you in more, so, um, FinCom met on Tuesday, um, Dr. Fitzpatrick and Principal Steele, incoming superintendent Steele, uh, presented to the finance committee, discussion lasted about forty minutes. The, um, I'll, so, uh, BBT has excess and deficiency, which is akin to free cash for the town, um, which is the difference between, essentially a difference between their revenues and expenditures over the course of the year. Um, it can be up to five percent of their operating budget. Um, they are looking for, um, the ability to create a stabilization fund, they are not requesting appropriation into the fund right now. Um, their stated rationale was that they received a thirty-dollar donation and don't have a place in which to place it. Um, I suggested that school committee create a gift fund, which is a, um, within the powers of the committee. Um, and then, um, EBT administration then said they wanted an additional, um, ability to save money and use that money towards capital projects, um, from their stabilization fund. I then said, that's not quite the reason for stabilization fund, um, stabilization is to kind of insulate you from outward shocks and make sure you don't have to leave people off in times of, of brief economic uncertainty. I asked a few times, um, what problem this would solve, um, and what stabilization would allow them to do that E and D currently doesn't, or that a gift fund currently wouldn't. Um, and they talked about great work that they do, um, as a, as a school, um, which I think is important. I didn't have a vote on FinCom, um, and nor do I have a vote here. I am immensely skeptical of the timing and rationale of the fund. School leadership was here, and then two days later, we got, um, an email sent, please, you know, request places on your warrant. Um, and they had no discussion, no inkling of a discussion about it here. Previously, Hope Dale had approved the stabilization fund in twenty-twenty-four, Northbridge had been, um, presented with it in both twenty-twenty-four and twenty-twenty-five. Um, FinCom, Northbridge rejected it both times, or did not support both times. Um, I'm, what I'm concerned about is that there will be future years in which a request, uh, a budget request will include an appropriation to stabilization. Um, and we all know the, the very little, um, local sway we have over BBT's budget. Right, we have a nine-point-five percent increase this year. Um, and it would be irresponsible, I think, of the board to not recommend the full amount, because if, if, um, the budget passes and, um, and seven other communities, we just need to find our, our progress, we'll actually pass the town meeting. So I, I, I think the incentives are, are not properly aligned at the regional level to maintain cost control. Um, I think, um, they can be creative enough budgetarily to make sure that they never hit the five percent at E and D at the end of the year. Um, and then, uh, this, this just allows them to essentially create an additional padding, take advantage of additional padding of the budget.
So, so if I understand, the big difference between what exists now and what will exist if we put this in place is it would no longer be capped at five percent, because you're allowed to keep five percent, and anything over the five percent needs to be returned.
Right, this gives them the opportunity to possibly keep ten percent potential, right?
That's what this really is.
I think the other thing, when you, if you, anyone wants to watch that video.
It's very uncomfortable if you'd like to watch it.
Yeah, no, but I mean, I think, I, I think there was a, um, a point continually made that M U R S D have to, what, be fair, why can't we have what they have? But that account was established so that state grant money would not be returned to the state, they were able to hang on to unspent grant money. So we had to create an account so they could then keep that money, not appropriated tax dollars from the town, but the state. So it made sense to, hey, here's a holding account for you. Um, my, you know, they're saying, this is just an account. But I think you have to consider how will that kind of be funded in the appropriation process. And I just think that I would prefer that both school, regional school districts come before the town to say, here are the specific projects we intend to do, please fund these. If we fund a stabilization account with a proposal list of projects as they had in that meeting, they're not bound to those projects. That's, money can be allocated to any cap.
What this is doing is giving, giving control away from the local boards to the school. And my question.
Little control we have.
And my issue is, this is such a good idea, why, why didn't they do this thirty, forty years ago? Why do they want to do it now? And, and what's the difference? And I understand maybe the, you know, that the national picture for vocational schools has always been great. They've always had additional opportunities to gather money from other sources, and maybe they feel some that may be drying up. You know, and this is their way to insulate themselves, but I think it's, to be frank, it's a, uh, it's the road paved to hell, do not think it is.
They, they make those arguments, it sounds like, right, but, right, they, they just bring those to us.
That's because, well. I don't think they can, I don't think they can make a good argument. I think, usual, the way is usually to divide and conquer, they know they have thirteen towns.
Right.
So what they try to do is divide and conquer, um, because it's very difficult to get all thirteen towns marching in the same direction at the same time.
And I just want to bring it back, say, I don't, I don't suggest malfeasance here, I think, I think BBT School Committee and the Superintendent are doing what you just said, they're looking to insulate themselves to avoid potential financial constraints in the future. Unfortunately, they're going to set, have financial constraints, the town will have financial constraints, the regions, other regional school district will have financial, we've got to work together on this thing, and I think that, you know, as we move forward with any uncertainty at the federal or state level, we should be collectively looking at requests and allocating resources in a, in a somewhat agreed-upon manner, and I think this is probably not a good practice to implement at this particular time.
Right, it's, it's the opposite of getting everybody to work together, it's like, we're going to get ours. And, you know, we got to take care of ourselves, and I, I, like, again, I, I won't repeat it, but I think it's.
The selectman got, got his point, the, um, juxtaposition between M U R S D coming with three articles saying, these are the things we want to do. And then this being without, without, um, you know, our brains, I think, uh, things are.
Uh, I was just thinking, uh, so is it true that this, to establish this, it only requires a simple. So it's an additional, okay, that's all I know.
Do, do we know when they started asking towns to do this?
Hope Dale Town Meeting approved this at ATM last year.
Right.
Which means they knew.
Like some towns last year and some towns this year, or are they asking all the rest of it?
So they asked all the town, they certainly asked all the towns this year.
Okay.
They had, they, Dr. Fitzpatrick said that Hope Dale, I don't want to say took it upon themselves, but was more proactive in establishing this. Um, and it was Northbridge who's, um, TA told me that FinCom group, um, did not vote favorably um, in both twenty-twenty-four and twenty-twenty-five.
So, you're saying last year, Hope Dale, what was enthusiastic about?
They approved.
Town meeting, town meeting has argued.
When I believe the original suggestion for the ballot wording was to include that Hope Dale had approved it.
Yeah, I'd like to know those details.
So, if you were to have a position on this, what would be, uh, be the appropriate way?
So, uh, I think, I think the motion would be to, uh, you know, vote to recommend to town meeting.
So, we didn't, we, we don't normally take a vote, usually it's FinCom.
So there is, so actually, FinCom voted on this, but this article seeks no appropriation. There is no expenditure of funds and does not require a FinCom vote. It took them.
I thought any financial article would, even if it, I understand you're saying there's no appropriation immediately, but the whole focus of this is financial and to create. And I, and did they really give, give their reason that they had a thirty-dollar donation if they had a place to put it?
Yes.
I mean, that, who, who said? I, so you don't have to answer it, but I want whoever said it to know.
No, Dr. Patrick said it's on the video.
He did.
Yeah, yeah, Genesis being the, the kickoff being or something, so that's why I said create a gift fund, because he has the ability to do that. We created a million-dollar one to qualify.
Okay, and can I make a motion that the select board not be in favor of this? Did, did we, who, how did it get on the warrant?
So we just, the board discussed it here, and BBT asked. So we placed on the warrant, discussed it, and said we'll kind of discuss the merits of it further.
So we never actually voted to put this on the warrant?
So we discussed.
Well, I know, I remember, I see what we discussed it, and it was with the FinCom, and we're all very clear that we didn't want this.
We weren't supporting it.
Remove either, I mean, I think it, having it on the warrant is, brings it up for discussion with the town, so. We, I think, I think it should be clear, since it's a, a select board article, right, that it should be clear that we are doing this at the request of EBT, this is not, and especially, we do not explicitly support this article.
But, but again, I don't, I, I thought the discussion we had, I know I was at the last meeting, but I thought the discussion we had was, we didn't support this. So how did it end up on the warrant? Because if it wasn't on the warrant, we couldn't vote on it, the townspeople couldn't vote on it, and it would not add to their majority. So how did it get on the warrant?
So, we finalized, the discussion on finalizing the warrant included this article on it. Um, the board did not vote one way or the other to support, to have a vote in favor.
Right, and we also didn't vote to remove it.
So my, I'll check the video, my recollection was that there was discussion on letting folks vote on.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I would always put this forward to the townspeople, but with a formal vote recommendation in favor of, not in favor of this, from the select board and FinCom. So I would, I would never not put this on.
Personally, right, well, let me be clear, that if I had a choice, I wouldn't have, but I'm certainly in favor of your motion to not support.
I mean, I'm, I'm more in favor of giving the town the opportunity to see that this has been, uh, presented to us and to vote on it.
Yeah, I, I don't want to make it look like we're, we're hiding anything. But I would like, Jeremy, you explain to me a thing about, we, we did have a question, my, I missed one of your points, Mike, is, do we need, you know, how does the vote need to happen? Like, if we did not put this on the warrant act, they would still need a majority of all the towns, as opposed to.
They would still need seven, I mean, it doesn't, doesn't lower the, doesn't lower, doesn't change the, doesn't change the.
Change the map, right, right, this would be, if we didn't put it on there, it would be a no. And so it would take away from, you know, it would, it would be a no, if we didn't put it on.
But other towns have had it on and voted it down.
Um, so, I'm not sure if Northbridge ever made it to the.
I see, okay.
So how did it not get on the warrant in Northbridge?
I will find out, I didn't ask, I don't. It, it may have made it to the warrant, the note I got from the TA was that FinCom did not support, um, its passage in both twenty-twenty-four and twenty-twenty-five.
Too crazy to give us.
Yeah, there are two things, do we, uh, you know, we're, we have a legal obligation with our original agreement, the, uh, Blackstone Valley over a long ago, they want anything spoiled with the town, but we have an obligation, we have to, because they have no avenue to do it, we're a regional system that we can agree with them, and then secondly, if you vote, you don't vote, I don't know if it's necessarily a no, right, they can just.
It is.
They, they can just wait until the visiting board here and bring it up, and that's.
Well, I, I hope they'll vote two years. I can, I can tell you from having been on the school committee, on the Van Dyck School Committee for almost a decade, a long time, that it, it goes to the select board to decide if it's going to go on the warrant or not. Now, I, I don't know, and I don't believe the original agreement was ever altered, and it's a good question. And, I mean, it is what it is, so we'll bring it up at the meeting.
Almost, if you guys aren't supportive of it, they can have a no, because they can just wait till all do, not hear any more.
Well, it would have to, it would have to get, no, but it comes down to is, they have to get a majority of thirteen towns, which is seven, right? And if we don't put it on warrant, or we vote it down at the town meeting, it's, a no is still a no, it's not a yes, they have to get seven. I think it has to be, it has to be all in the same, well, I don't know if, I don't know if they're, you know, if they're trying to knock, knock it down over years till they get seven yeses, or if it all has to be at, at the same time.
So it's, I mean, it seems like, I mean, I just, I'm personally in favor of, in favor of not supporting this. It's like, however best to phrase this, um, I mean, I think, I mean, I think.
Sorry, my, my, my made a motion.
Oh, you did make a motion.
Just a second.
Sorry, I can, you, I didn't, I didn't catch.
I said, I, I, I make, uh, I moved that, these like. I said, I, I, I make, uh, I moved that the select would not, uh, support this article.
Well, a second, here, that, that, I guess that's what I was trying to.
Okay, okay, sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear it sort of.
So I guess. I don't think I said it that cleanly either, I said it the second time.
In, in yes vote.
Okay, yes, thank you for that, okay. So, and that was a second from you, Mike. Okay, uh, further discussion. I mean, I think, I, so yeah, I think it is good to bring it up for a vote, but I also, yeah. In favor of not supporting it, whatever the phrasing was, yeah.
I think this would have gone a lot better if they were transparent when they were here with us.
Yeah.
The reason they were transparent is because they knew that we'd have the same result that they have right now.
But at least they would have been forthwith.
Absolutely, so, so to, to that point, I might have suggested that. If you can, in your, if you can guarantee the, the, the funding of this account will be from only third parties and not from town appropriations, I would be informed.
Right.
But, but we didn't have that discussion. Right.
Yeah, they, they have talked about moving E N D into stabilization.
Well, so, but that would be a gift account. That's how it would get.
Right, but they wanna call it.
But they don't want a gift account, they want a stabilization so that they can have a higher threshold than five percent than their E N D.
I would prefer to give every, the municipality, the school districts as much flexibility as they, that makes sense for them to manage their budget and execute their capital plans, et cetera. But this does not do that.
No, it doesn't.
It does without any guardrails.
It, it, it actually decreases the flexibility we have.
Right.
Because now money's on five percent that should be returned to us in the proper ratio, it won't be, they can just hang on to it.
So this is, um, I know we still have a motion on the floor, but, uh, this is. This document that you're sharing here, Jeremy, this is what you're, uh, going to be sharing with the community, um, so is there. Or select board recommendation, is, is there like space for the discussion here that the select board has placed this here at the request of B V T, but we do not support it or something, you know? Be, be clear, not just the single word, like not favorable.
Yeah.
Something like that, um. Just to. Because, right, there is that ambiguity, it's like, why are they putting forward a, an article that they're like not supporting, but it'll be in the discussion, so.
Quick question to you, Jeremy, is FinCom. Um, I know that it wasn't unanimous, I don't believe, oh.
It was six to one.
Right, are they, they're gonna have another vote, uh, not on this, but are they gonna reconsider this at all? Have you had a chance to talk to?
I would be surprised if they reconsidered it.
Right.
Although I'm surprised that the vote count too, so.
But, but I feel like they voted on an account, not considering how it's gonna be funded, so there's this.
We, we, we covered that, because I'm ambiguous, um, ambiguous, um, as to how it's gonna be funded, uh. Superintendent said a couple times, so we don't have to come back to the town's funding.
If we want, then we come back. I understand why you want it, but that's not what we want, and that's not what's intended.
And I would say, like, well, what, what's the money going into the account? It came from the towns to begin with, like, you're not, it's not saving.
Right, but they're really saying is, we, we just don't wanna give it back. That's what it is. They want a stabilization account because they don't wanna have to give, but give it back.
Right, I mean, but yeah, more, more clarity and transparency about like how, yeah.
How often do they give money? That, right, so.
They make sure it doesn't go a five percent.
Right, so, so if, if they don't, if they never return the money back and they, and, and the fund there is to hold the money, then they both return back. Then, right, they change their operating budget in order to allow that to happen.
Yeah.
That's exactly.
So I think, I think we could probably bring this to a vote, yeah, so, okay, so, uh, all in favor?
I.
Opposed? All right, so we are in favor of not supporting.
Right.
Great, thank you. All right, so, um.
Is it not favorable with extreme malice?
Wild malice.
Wow, no, no malice, just.
Discomfort, yeah.
No ambiguity, no ambiguity.
And I don't, I think so, just as far as warrant articles. The other articles we did sort of expressly support, except for the one that we wanted to pass over, which was about the, um, the bylaw change, which now I can't.
Thing used to be thirty-three, but we changed the number.
Yeah, so it's, um, relative to, uh, employment eligibility of.
Okay, and so I believe that sort of covers, so the, the, the signed warrant has been posted.
Um, and, and mailed.
If they got it.
Great.
And we formally voted to pass over two, so it's, we said.
Yes.
In favor of these, passing over this one.
And I will say, there was a gentleman who came into my office. When the fall town meeting warrant went out, said, hey, I used to live in a different town, I came out with this big warrant report that explained everything, you should do something like that. And he got his warrant in the mail yesterday and gave it to my office today and said, what about this warrant? So it was nice to have it up on my screen and literally have his former towns on my desk saying I'm working off of this right now, so. Um, so then I'll get out to folks, uh, we'll post it online tomorrow, we'll have the budget documented, it'll have bylaw changes, it'll have commentaries, FinCom votes, um, select board votes. Uh, we'll post it online, disseminate it, have some printed copies, and then have Q R codes at town meetings, so folks can walk up and scan it and have everything, um, on their.
Since the meeting is Thursday. Run through.
Uh, and the town, thank you, the town moderators meeting is tomorrow, the walkthrough of the, of the A T M warrant, um, so we'll be going through the report at that point as well.
Just thinking about, like, Misco has no cell coverage, so people are gonna scan and put it on their devices.
We, we send it as well.
We should try to as much as possible.
They have guest wifi.
Yeah.
Okay, guest wifi. All right, so, uh, I think that, that was it on the warrant articles, uh, so then, right, so eleven, uh. Yeah, F Y twenty-six, but the discussion, yeah, so.
Yeah, so, um, this is just relative to the two requests that the board had, other boards about funding position, funding fractional pieces of positions, so. Um, Concom has voted to use their weapons protection account, um, to fund the marginal increase in conservation agent salary, um, and. Um, the library trustees have not yet voted because they can get a quorum, but there is broad, if not unanimous consensus, um, among those polled. Um, to support those additional four hours for library aid through the state account in fiscal twenty-six. Um, the way I convey it to the library director and trustees is that this is, this is a, a, and to conservation conditions, that this is a bridge sort of method, this is. Um, having, you know, everybody in the town organization kind of pulling on the same oar, um, and getting a little skin in the game, so. Um, my anticipation, the general fund will be able, through, through new growth, it'll be through two and a half, to be able to absorb a lot of this going forward, um. Also convey to the trustees, um, library trustees about, you know, what's the plan for the state aid account, um, so that's something on their radar to, to say, you know. It, it's not reasonable for a three hundred and sixty thousand dollar, whatever it's four hundred thousand dollar budget to have an eighty-five thousand dollar, you know, internal stabilization fund, um, so what's, what's the plan? And that's, so that's on that radar as well, but, um, I don't think it's. Because I have to finalize and present the budget tomorrow in the support to revoke the budget right now, um, those will just be additional monies that will charge those salary items to other accounts, and then that eleven thousand dollars change or whatever will fall through to free cash.
Yeah, did you, when you conveyed, did we commit to a fiscal year we would absorb?
I said it is, it is a bridge, um, a, a bridge funding, and it's our anticipation that this is the. Long term, so, so I did not say in fiscal twenty-seven, I would hope in fiscal twenty-seven, we can wash eleven thousand dollars into the general.
But in the last time we did that, we actually, when we went into it, we committed to the next fiscal years, I don't know if you have that same.
I don't believe I made that commitment.
I like flexibility.
It's my hope, so, yeah, I love being equitable. Uh, so, no, but it's my, it's my anticipation that we do that.
Okay.
Interesting. All right, that's all I have on.
Thank you, all right, and then, uh. Item twelve is, uh, fiscal twenty twenty-five, uh, third quarter update.
Of those three. Yes, all right. Obviously, I don't do like animation one by one sort of thing, but there's a lot of, you can, you can x out that. There's a lot of numbers here, so I'm gonna go for one, so I wanna talk a little bit about revenue, a little bit about expenditures, and then how they. So, real estate taxes are collected quarterly, um, we never expect a hundred percent collections, we don't budget it, we never really quite expect it. Um, so we're on pace with that nine ninety-nine percent collections, uh, final quarters due May first. Uh, town hall will be open from nine to one on May second, for folks who wanna come the day after, which is Friday. Um. We don't budget anything for the prior year collections, and that kind of makes up the difference between what we don't, so a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars in fiscal twenty twenty-four taxes, I collect, so we're, we're where we should be on real estate taxes. Uh, personal property, um, we anticipate, you know, about a hundred thousand dollar surplus here, um, this has to do a little bit with timing, a little bit with anticipated bills, um, you know, and just the differences in what personal property is gained.
I probably were gonna see, did we see a big, um, surplus? Like all of last year, right, like I kind of expected some of this to flatten out a little bit, or is that next year?
Yeah, so in motor vehicle exercise tax, we did, because we had an additional quarter posted in, in twenty twenty-four, maybe that's what.
Maybe.
So we should be closer to normal on motor vehicle.
Okay.
Motor vehicle, um. Straining slightly above budget, um, prior year, so we do budget a bit for prior year collections on motor vehicles, it's a bit, um, a bit more common than real estate. Um, but there are sixty K above budget already, so kind of anything that comes in is okay, so to speak. Uh, tax liens redeemed, um, this is when we focus that one percent that we don't collect in real estate taxes, we budget zero because it's very lumpy, so, uh, eighty-five thousand, um, is, is the good there. Um, cannabis, this is the, um, local option sales tax, uh, we didn't have enough experience, um, in twenty twenty-four to budget anything in twenty twenty-five, so we didn't. Um, so through three quarters, we've collected ninety-six thousand. Again, we don't have a lot of experience here, my experience was in Attleboro, Q four and Q one were the biggest quarters in collection, um. People buy more cannabis in Summerton. Um, the budget used, the fiscal twenty-five budget used the house weighs and means unrestricted general government aid figure.
Nice job.
And, um. Uh, the final state budget is about ten thousand dollars, or is ten thousand dollars higher than the house weighs in budget was, so just structurally, there will be ten thousand more coming in state aid than our budget was based on. So for ambulance charges are about eighteen thousand dollars over budget, um. Uh, and over budget is good in this side of the presentation, um, the, um. There's some billing issues with, with Millville, where there'll be some drop off in collections as we equalize over two calendar years to, to hit what our M L A rate was, um, but still. Um, when I say it's eighteen thousand dollars over budget here, there is a cost associated with that, we definitely have more consumables to do, having more overtime associated with it, um, but. Not one to one, um, so. This generally good news. Uh, investment income, um, and interest income, um, is two hundred and thirteen thousand dollars over budget right now.
We'll get rid of that next quarter.
Um, so, this is, this is a lot to do with short and medium term investments, so this is not our O P A B and our, our. Longer term investments, this is a lot of short term instruments, this is CDs, this is short term treasuries, this is high yield savings for cash management, um, I talked about a little bit later, but, you know. Interest rate environment is going to change. Um. All building permit types, ninety thousand dollar surplus through three quarters, um, activity going on, um, I think the town's been generally conservative in, in, um, this line over the last couple of years, um, so this is, this is something we generally run a surplus on. And there's a few things, um, a lot of, um, some, some board of health. Permanent testing fees are, are not anywhere near what we budgeted, but then you look on the expenditure side, and we haven't spent nearly as much on testing associated with it, so there's nothing material. Really, we're just, we're looking at the, the top three, real estate, personal property, motor vehicle, as long as those hit, we're, we're, we'll be okay, the rest is how we generate our free cash. So we're about three percent, s- some stuff's not beat, but we're about three percent where, where we need to be, so I think we can probably generate somewhere around a seven hundred thousand dollar surplus. On the expense side, um. Town costs are not on it, but, uh, lawyers are notoriously bad about getting their billing in on time, so we just have through January right now. Um, but even through January, which would have been a little more than halfway through the year, we've only spent thirty thousand dollars, we haven't had huge budget aid because there are, you know. There's huge, you know, exposure, um, at any given time. Um, I T would never be close, uh, so we budget the I T, uh, contract amounts, but then. Sorts of other stuff, we've done server room cleanup, we've had additional hardware, we've, we've had some stuff, so we'll be close, uh, we'll keep an eye on that, um, after we get past May first, which is when we can make any transfers that we may need to have. Um, one seven six is the Z B A, um, department, I talked about this during the, during the budget presentation, it seems that like half of that position was budgeted twice, we essentially budgeted for one point five of the position. So nothing's being charged there, um, so that twenty-two thousand will just fall right through to free cash. Um, police salaries and O T, we have about a hundred thousand, a hundred and twenty-five thousand, um, depending on, on how the fourth quarter goes, um, in, in total savings. Um, there's a, there's a position that's not, uh, it's not on leave right now, um, it's filled with O T in a, not one way. That's generated that savings. Fire and highway also had some vacancies and will have some turnbacks, but, um, not that sort of level. Health insurance, so we budget health insurance, um, with a lot of variables in it, uh, we don't know. Necessarily what folks are going to take during open enrollment, we don't have that data when we do the budget, so there's a little bit of buffer there, and if the town paying, um. Deductibles for folks, we budget a healthy clip based upon previous year's experience, um, and that doesn't always come through, so. I'd rather have that. You know, insulating buffer here in health insurance, um, and then it fall through to free cash, and we can use it on something specific rather than, uh, uh, a special time meeting, rather than, you know. Cutting it super close, um, and.
What is this surplus of our total? Like, what's the percentage?
Um, we're at like one point, almost one point two million, so.
Six, seven, seven.
Yeah, less than twenty percent. Um, and that's, you know, we still have three.
That's reasonable.
Um, and just a reminder, FinCom reserves are about sixty-one thousand and select board miscellaneous is about fifteen thousand, so, um, select board miscellaneous is great on stuff that comes in on June twenty-ninth, or as long as it's a June thirty-sixth. Right, and it's that kind of stuff, um, FinCom reserves are for the, you know, we actually misbudgeted this sort of thing. So the takeaway, vacancies create turnbacks, good for the bottom line, not necessarily good for operations, um, we have vacancy, uh, we have vacancies around town right now, like council and agent, right, is gonna have a turnback because of the. You know, administrative assistant vacancy, but the director's been pulling her out, so, you know. No, it's great, so on our steps, it, about ninety-three thousand, um, John Dudley, uh, Highway Secretary, had to revise that just before the last select, or the last FinCom meeting, because we had to salt, um, in mid-April. Um, so that would be, uh, funded with free cash, or request to be funded free cash at, at annual committee, and if all of those articles pass, we'll have about a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars of free cash remaining. Um, so if you go through the last two sides, about seven hundred thousand in revenue overages, about five hundred thousand in expenditure under, you're looking at one point two. Additional one hundred thousand in existing free cash, um. Like I said, can swing wildly within interest rate environment, short term holding, so if interest rates get cut, and we're instead of getting three point nine percent, we're getting one point nine percent, it's going to affect what we're doing forward. Any outsized activity in workers' comp or insurance claims, don't know here, um, and then we've got a few deficits and things like chapter ninety, um, that we are trying to, trying to close before the end of the fiscal year, uh, make sure we get all our reimbursables in, um. So looking, my, hoping to this in a, in a couple of months, but the one to one point five million dollars, my expectation of free.
Just, just a comment, based on past experience, uh, we used to talk about my truth in budgeting, things like that, and right sizing the budget, um. Over the past few days, I've been reviewing historical special town meetings and annual town meetings, and what struck me was, you know. Ten, you know, twenty years ago, ten years ago, five, we, we were having four special town meetings. A year, right, and it was literally due line item of money movement. So the thing that strikes me about this is, we're not even in, going into this town meeting, we're talking about moving money across department line items, we're actually understanding. What's gonna fall through, where we are from, from a revenue standpoint, and I think this sort of starts to validate some of the things we've talked about for years in terms of how you end up to a place where. You can start to understand, opt around free cash, which will drive capital investment, things of that. you can start to understand opportunity around free cash, which will drive capital investment, things of that nature while we're still, you know, growing the operations. So I think yeah, from a budget standpoint, you guys are doing a great job. And from a management standpoint, all department heads managing your budgets, uh, proactively is how I look at this. Is resulting in some really positive numbers. It's not a mystery.
Yeah, so. Um, and it's, they're saying we don't know how good we have.
No, I'm, I'm actually saying the department has done a fantastic job of right sizing their budgets and managing their budget. So we're not doing for special town meetings just to make sure the line items work. You know, and, and I think that we're to the point of we know where we are now, we can actually look ahead to say, how do we want to, um, move the operations ahead, this type of information?
I also really appreciate the detail of this report. So my big this, um.
I'll make sure I'll share it, show the presentation.
Great. It'll give us, yeah, something to compare it to, like each, is the, is the idea to do this each quarter?
Yeah, definitely. So the last two quarters, I kind of made my own notes and just talked through it. And I thought as we get towards the end of fiscal year, we better tell it a little bit. But what folks watching the reporting are online and then.
Excellent. Thank you. Right. Was that, uh, I say anything more on that? Okay. So, okay. So then, uh, thirteen is the town administrator report. So to you.
Yeah, so I did the same thing with this. So, um, some, an update on fiscal twenty twenty five goals, one of which was the twenty twenty five employee surveys. We'll go through that, um, and some other happenings, um, to so this was twenty twenty five goals, uh, the board set them January twenty ninth to apply to Q three and Q four. Um, first of all, an appointed quorum and meet for the capital planning commission and the agricultural commission, um, I should say C P C, um. Uh, three were appointed, we'll meet at some point in May. We had a, um, um, update earlier, uh, at com, I don't have a quorum of folks to appoint yet, so we're still trying to, trying to advertise and I will do that at town meeting. Vote to adopt those three policies. So, um, we're still on the stakeholder feedback. Um, there's lots of, there's, you know, three and four different departments on Flanders. Um, personnel is ongoing with, with H R, um, it's kind of took a little bit of a backseat to rolling out online time and attendance, but we're still stubborn with that. And select board has been adopted and I've been promising to circulate council as edits, so we'll do that shortly. Um, so we built out org chart in fiscal twenty six budget. Um, so, uh, Katie and I have been working on multiple iterations of that. So as part of the town administrators warrant report, we'll put a, um, a org chart in that.
Well, that is that as is, or is that also include future positions as?
Future positions. Um, and there'll be, you know, it's, I want to be clear, it is, it is like an operational chart. So it says like town administrator assessor, right? And then there's a, something on the bottom that says the, you know, all positions are appointed by the select board, except the following, saying the assessor, you know, has, um, reporting authority to report to the board assessors, yeah. Um, launch employee morale and cultural survey, it's like one to three key performance indicators per department. Um, so the results are on the next couple of slides and the K P I's, um, we go out to department heads next week to say, what is it that you think is, um, important that we measure in your department, can measure? It'll be. And then closing out the trash question, so, uh, this is going to challenge for me to carve out enough time to do this. I talked with, um, former member Morally about this last week. Um, so it's something I want to get done in, in the fiscal year, um, kind of focus on this right now. So, um, I believe we had twenty, sent it out to forty seven people and had twenty seven respondents. It was an anonymous survey, needed the link to be sent to you, but, um, folks, I, that's important to be honest. So overall, how satisfied are you with your employment with the town amendment? So, um, eighty eight percent of people were either very satisfied or somewhat satisfied, um, which, which I took as an overwhelming, positive, positive result. Um, you know, a quarter essentially nearly half the folks. As how folks are described, town morale, um, I can pick up to three. Um, our leading indicators here were, uh, so I, I saw the I V's both kind of half positive, half negative, um, and then give another category. Um, so our, our leaders were, were satisfied, engaged, motivated, optimistic. Um, which, which is great. Um, we had five, five respondents were pessimistic, um, which was a little concerning. Um, and then the other were just not really know, negative, various negative, I mean, sounds widely. Again, uh, I think, I think it'd be foolish to try to please all the people all the time. Um, so I took this as a, a, a general positive. There's some more open ended stuff I'm going to get to here, uh, but I think, I think there's a lot of, a lot of good energy going on. How would you describe government culture, town government culture? So professional, respectful, goal oriented, fair. I, I was, I was really glad to see professional and respectful as, as, you know, the overwhelming, you know, we are, we're we're professional organization and I've said it to this board, I've said it to anyone who asked me that I want to make this town a place where I would want to work. Um, and I think, I think that um, means the fact that a lot of that's already happening. Um, and the, the two others were, were also both negative, but I, I think, um, this is, um, this is really positive.
I think the other thing with these types of things, it's going to take time. It's like a battleship. You know, things like aimless or, you know, archaic, these are things that, you know, the proof's in the pudding. So
these are pretty powerful words too. They're very descriptive.
And this is, you know, this is a survey we'll do this one next year. Be side by side, see that. Um, so this was a strongly agree, strongly disagree sort of thing. Um, so the first had to do with career opportunities. The, the fourth bullet down, uh, every single person either agreed or most strongly agreed that they took pride in the work of the doing of the town. Which is, which is great. Um, the others, one's opportunities for professional growth, support my professional development and opportunities for applying my talent expertise. Again, overwhelmingly positive. Um, and it's been something in the fiscal twenty six budget that we, we added more money to, to training in various departments to, um, to travel and travel and dues and whatever it's called, um, and so, uh, recruitment and retention in H R, uh, to, to work on these things. Um, I thought it was important to include a question on pay and benefits. Um, so uh, plurality of folks disagree that the pay is fair. Um, that comes through with some of, a lot of the open ended questions I'll get through next. But the non-pay benefits, um, are, are adequate. I do not want to be too flowery, flowery and beating in my language about the non-pay benefits. Uh, but I think that's historically been a, um, a, a characteristic of municipal government work that, that the, the pay lags the private sector, but there are ancillary things. Um, and folks seem to, seem to be reflecting that, their answers are.
I think just to the, the pay question too, I mean, from past experience, people take this information in, in my corporate background and say, okay, we're going to do something about it. I mean, the good news here is we're actually doing something about what appears to be the number one a very strong sentiment around that issue. So it's, uh, something we can, uh, hopefully react to fairly quickly.
Um, this was on communication. Um, so open and honest to a communication and I feel able to communicate freely up the management chain. Um, similarly style questions, but folks, I, I, I wrote this question from, coming from a place where I was once in a position where I didn't feel able to express to my manager what I thought was going on. Um, and that doesn't, that doesn't seem at all to be the case here. Town leadership, uh, provides clear communication on town priorities and happenings. Uh, the plurality is neutral. Um, and then there are some positive, some negative here, um, or some agree, some disagree. Um, so there's a lot of open ended questions on the next that have, what would you suggest to change, um, morale or organizational cultures, a lot focused on communication. So um, I think that'll be, um, that's a bit ambiguous. Um, I think that has, uh, uh, informal approach about just developing relationships and kind of casual interactions, but then a more rigid department head meetings, here's the priorities, select board, here's what's coming down the pipe, those sorts of things, uh, which I've done a handful of, but, um, kind of fell off in the past couple of months. Um, handful of concerns on engine department total equity, uh, why does some folks get this, some other folks don't, um, the answer is equality is not equities, uh. Uh, so, but it was largely positive. Um, and a lot of folks said, um, I answered this based upon my experience in the town, but the last year, things have gotten better. Handful of years, things have gotten better. Um, so the open ended questions on what changes would you suggest, um, overall. The additional feedback, some folks really let me have it. Um, but there were, um, there were multiple comments about the comic class study. So I'm glad you brought that up earlier, that there, you know, things that I, I answer on pay was about right now, but I'm looking forward to what the town does. I, I, I hope the town follows through, like, um. I, I said this a lot to, to, to a lot of folks that, you know, I came in in July, I started the study in the fall and there's a lot of me saying, trust me, we'll implement this, trust me, we'll get this right. And they don't, you know, leave someone on the street when I'm saying that. And generally people have said like, all right, well, we'll, we'll wait and see about this. Um, so I appreciate, um, folks professionalism on that. Um, and then there's also the opportunity to say, you know, if you want to discuss any of your answers, like put your name here and I'll schedule a meeting with you once the survey is done. Um, two folks took the opportunity to do that, so I'm gonna follow up with that. So not universally positive, but I don't think we should have thought it was going to be. Um, I think it's generally positive. I think there's some, um, some time series stuff we can do here and do this again next year. Um, but I was, I was happy with the, with the state of the town things.
That's, but there, there's actionable things, clear actionable things coming back here. And I would think that, you know, from our, this board standpoint, our plan to do our FY twenty six goals, say in Q one, possibly July, that would go a long way towards setting out the expectations for the the next twelve months to, to, to everybody in terms of our priorities and what we're focused on doing. So I think we should probably focus on making that happen sooner than later.
Right. See, right. Some of these, this feedback could feed those.
Absolutely. I see.
Yeah. He should swat.
Like God it's for him.
No, but I, I, I would not focus on me on communications. I have an idea.
Yeah.
Uh, but, uh, so I thank everyone who took the time to take the survey.
Yeah. Is this, is it still open or is this like?
It is. It is. I asked folks to answer by Monday, so I could compile this for today. So if anything else comes in, I'll take it just as sincerely, uh, but I don't anticipate any of that.
But it could be potentially included for comparison next year, or it could be also included potentially for our goal setting. So yeah, yeah. So those employees who did not fill it out, we would still welcome your feedback.
One thing I want to press upon this board is that people took time out of their day, whatever time it took to do this.
The average was seven minutes.
Well, fine, which is quickest, the quickest way we'd lose their focus is by not doing anything. And this just goes by the wayside. Next year, none of this, you'll have ten people do it, not four or whatever. So, um, we should keep that top of mind. They need to see us acknowledge and act and speak to us.
Yeah. So do we have a sort of placeholder for like things we want to bring up at the goal setting? Cause I think this is, this is an important one.
There were, um, two or three things are written down. I've been, I didn't clue from the setting that's our either fiscal twenty six or full year. Um, and this one has a fiscal twenty five goal was a track year over year. It was the goal. So.
Yeah.
I think that actually.
Perhaps add this sort of is mine this data for, uh, like feeding into our goals next year.
That's great. All right. Some other stuff's going on. So, um, we had a kind of a pause in the senior worker, the senior tax abatement workup program. Um, as we got clarity around funding, authority and who gets to say what sort of stuff. Um, so we'll have a proposal to the select board for fiscal it's actually works on calendar years, which is a little, little frustrating. Um, so, uh, senior uh, services director and I will have a proposal to the select board or presentation to the select board, um, in the future, but we've, um, unfrozen the program and continue and, um, the rest of fiscal twenty six, fiscal twenty five, which is great. Um, Barbara reporting, um, so the state has reached out, um, about our obligation to the federal government on reporting, which, um, we are behind on. Um, so I've gone into the portal and started to, um, so in case you get emails from the state that sends it to the select board rather than just me, something more.
So this is on your plate or is this on our accountant's plate?
I am the, uh, I'm the person who has logged into the portal and there is, um, the, the person who can oblige the town and sign off on the town's. So I have access to everything the accountant has access to, um, but ultimately it's up to me to make sure their work is.
Fair enough, but, but I mean, in terms of heavy lifting to make sure that the information is loaded and things like that, is there any delegation you could do to our accountant to, cause he's that and they were the ones that were kind of giving us guidance on what's in, what's out, and this is what you have.
Yeah, um, I don't, I don't know that I would do the whole of it on them, but I would say kind of, yeah, this is, this is what I need.
I'm, I'm trying to make it easier for you. That's the intent here.
Our, our ledger is not the most user friendly. So when I don't want to be a user in it, I may be on the account to do that and correct it. Um, H R coordinator, Jen O'Neil and I attended a joint Mass Municipal Managers Association and Mass Municipal H R meeting, um, and, uh, on four ten, um, which was really great about, um, a number of kind of employee support programs. And it was, um, it was really interesting to have tables and committee discussions from both the T A side and then the H R side about one of the icebreakers is what's your biggest fear, you know, at work sort of thing. To have the H R side and the T A side was, uh, was, was interesting. Um, Millville emergency communications tower, chief cursing out to the groundbreaking of four fourteen. So this would be great, um, to, to improve, um, communication reliability for the metacomic emergency communications. Um, commi- commission.
Where's it going?
Behind, uh, behind the elementary school in Millville.
Okay.
Um, FinCom, as we talked about before, I met, um, for three and a half hours last Tuesday, um, to discuss the current articles. I was at the New England States Government Finance Officers Association conference from the, uh, last Wednesday.
At this point, are you just making it up?
You know, the website is just no any G F O A. And then I got there and it's like, this is S, the Kepsen Estates. So the New England States Government Finance Officers Association, um, uh, some federal updates, some state updates, some, uh, updates from investment managers, um, including Bartholomew, who does a lot of our funds. Um, and about kind of short and medium term economic outlooks. So everyone had to change their presentations at ten minutes beforehand or whatever. And then, um, both website and conclass, um, projects, um, are ongoing and on schedule. Um, we've received the job descriptions back from the Collin Center. I've reviewed all the department head ones, sent them to department heads, the department heads reviewed all of their reports, sent them to their, um, their constituent folks. All those comments will be compiled, um, by, compiled and reviewed by Jen and I, um, to be sent back to, um, the Collin Center before those job descriptions get finalized. Um, senior center project, we had an update earlier today. Um, this is with our consultant advocate who's kind of studying alternatives to three north absite and um, not necessarily, um, any definitive sorts of stuff, but to be able to say, you know, what else can we, should we consider? We looked at test fits, um, at a library site, um, to do kind of joint community space there, um, looking at rehabbing, um, current site, costing that out, how do we do marketing, all these sorts of questions, um, and then evaluating that against supposedly we already have three north. Um, so we had, um, Elena joins, um, as well as members of the COA, uh, and, and the senior services director. So we're moving forward on that. We have no kind of reporting.
Three north Ave, are we also assessing a smaller version based on the new programming guidelines? Or are we just assuming it's the same solution on three north Ave?
So we didn't task initially our consultants with reviewing three north Ave, but we did task them with reviewing eight Morrison Drive, and that seems to be immediately off the table for myriad of reasons. Um, so I think we can refocus that part of the task order to.
Then we talked about some for that, and you know, because we, we've been downs, based on the programming assessment, it would downsize three north Ave as well as any other solution. So I just want to make sure.
They seem to think that even the last proposal was small. For the needs of, yes, for the needs of a senior center.
Well, I just want to make sure that based on the. Well, I just want to make sure that based on the program. Assessment.
They were quite laudatory about the effort of the committee on the programming side. Um about getting, you know, being thoughtful and getting to their needs and square footage numbers. And yeah, sentence. A lot of the, to go any smaller would be a building which you're feeling tight in.
Height being warm with possibility of expansion on a sizable lot might be the way to get something started, the same.
That's a good point.
It's a good point. Right. Um Community Preservation Commission has a joint meeting with Updun Community Preservation um Commission about um N U R S D debt. Uh meeting on Monday, um so about what points are eligible um within the fields article and then setting a a cap. I I will reiterate here, the same thing I did at FinCom, is the expectation that fiscal twenty twenty six borrowing and resultant debt service will be. Minimal if at all in a footless project. Um so.
In FY twenty six.
For FY twenty six, yeah. So the. The CPC support that gets voted on for town meeting for fiscal twenty six. We're gonna talk about what the cap and the committee is comfortable with, and likely it will be a number that they're comfortable with going forward, but the fiscal twenty six number will be very small.
But that will be communicated at town meeting.
Yes.
The longer term obligation CPC is agreed to, some of the police station debt, that. Because it was based on current surcharges, what the CPC feels comfortable allocating in future years. And then depending on. What is eligible based on the work being done, you'd have an annual vote on a specific dollar.
Just like we annually vote on the police station debt. Um and just Ryan, a friend who's watching, uh open enrollment, we have uh HR is conducting an information session to kick it off on Tuesday, four twenty nine. Um up here in in this room, and that includes voluntary employee pay benefits as well. So combined insurance will be here as well as our um employer pay benefits. That's it.
Thank you for that. Is it, is that the the PowerPoint version of the two-page memo?
Yes.
Great. Great. So uh. Any questions for Jeremy before we move on? So uh so fourteen is future agenda items. Um so we're gonna continue to revisit uh committees. Committee creations, potentially, we talked about, I think, portable housing. Remember, that was another one.
Yeah, I was really just getting the recreation field committee.
Oh, that was right, but when we created, we just don't have anybody in it, so we'll populate that. Um then licensing for AI analysis and teams, Jason, I think you've been pushing for this, so.
Uh yeah, we'll talk about it at the May seventh meeting. Um. It's not a whole lot of new information. It will be financial discussion, hopefully.
Uh right. And then you've also asked us to talk about the uh select board bylaw review, records retention.
Yes, there's a, there's a section uh about uh record retention and a suggestion to either. Add some verbiage or be a little bit more specific in the bylaw.
In the general bylaws.
And the general bylaws. About our, about our specific board's record retention. And whether or not that should go to the policy or it should be a separate bylaw, something of the sort.
Yeah, review plans for driveway and more. Just one yet.
So this um. Parking lot that comes off of Taft there, um it goes up um around the fields, um as you're. To your left as you're pacing away from the lake towards the fields, um is in total disrepairment. Um and Parks Department got a handful of quotes on it, um and wants to pay for it um out of the revolving fund. But anything that pays more than ten thousand dollars requires select board approval. Um I believe they've received three votes. And I was ready to put it here, uh but the Parks Commission thought it was more pertinent or. The correct procedure for Parks Commission to vote, to recommend, to accept, to do this project and then come to the select board and say.
You're talking about the field across the street or the parking lot across the street from the the beach or the.
The boat from that.
The road from that.
Okay.
It is. She needs to.
Yeah.
All right. And then, uh right, special permit application from the nineteen twenty six committee, which we talked about earlier. So that'll be coming up on probably the May twenty first meeting. Or thereafter.
Good. That's great for me.
Uh and then, right, next meetings. So our next, oh, sorry, yeah, my.
Highway.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Can we just get a date? I don't care if it's in August, but.
Yeah, I've talked to the surveyor about this. Yeah.
Are you talking about? Which part of that?
I wanna, I want, I want the multi-year plan associated with the payment improvement study.
Um I do have one.
Okay, sure.
So this, um I ran into Dylan, the town planner, um at the end of the day today and then got a draft from them right now. Um so there is congressional directed spending out of Congressman Akonkla's office. Last year, we applied for the senior center funding. Then that entire program was dismantled and none of those programs got funded um for this fiscal year, uh fiscal twenty five, which that ends in um September. They're doing fiscal twenty six solicitation right now, um and we had very short notice, you know, get a half or something like that to put something in. Um so we worked with our consultants on the water project and submitted um a a proposal for um. Funding of the creation of a of water system with agenda. Um the proposal is quite long, quite detailed, something we've talked with the Congress's office about before. Um I talked with their staff yesterday, um and um then Dylan talked to their staff again to Congressman's staff today. And it requires a letter of support from the select board. Um Dylan is drafting something. Um. So I'd be looking, I don't have the language um right now, but um I I will share it with the board, but we. The turnaround is we need to get something in on Tuesday for them. Um so. I'd be looking for a vote from the select board against the not anticipated forty-eight hours ahead of time, something we learned about this afternoon. You want to support Mendon's application for congressional directed spending um for the creation of a.
Salute. Second.
Additional discussion?
This is not for a specific phase of the water project, but just the water project in general.
Yeah, we talk about all of the future capital outlets that will be necessary, right? We're requesting tens of thousands of dollars.
Right, right.
So um.
Right, I'd ask if it was like a hundred million, right?
So why don't we just say water answer? Why don't we just throw it out?
We're gonna cancel the whole program.
And the subway?
So.
Maybe even a moat.
So I know they are asking for like letters of support, so would this be too like? We would have a letter that we would sign in support of this, so.
Yes.
Um so like supporting.
So if you all, if you all are comfortable, you can authorize a signature and just take. Take a example of your signature. I will circulate the letter ahead of time and people can raise their.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you for, thank you for doing that. I know, I know it was. Fast turnaround.
There are always, there are always sore windows, but this one's in particular.
Well, right. I mean, I think we. Right.
Well, you know, it was a good choice.
Yeah.
We've been working on.
Right.
It it was, I don't want to say shuffle ready, it's a project we have on the shelf, that very, that very, to that was great in application.
Right. And there's a lot of, a lot of uh. Right, multiple phases of this study.
Yeah.
Feeding into this, which I think will really. It'll be in a good position, should there be. Great. All right. Thank you for that. All right. Were there any other um? Future agenda items?
Did, did we at some point discuss doing, doing? Current state of. We're gonna do a, ask about that.
I think we were talking about having Jason come to do an overview of the buildings.
Right.
The current, the current state of how the current physical plan meets their needs.
Yeah, I think.
That's part of this vision.
It is something that, yeah, we should discuss at some point. So I just, I don't know.
Yeah, we asked him to come back during the budget. Yep. And I think the capital program has money set aside to do an analysis. Also have to work for assessing. Current state and what's needed. Maybe it can be done over Morrison.
Got some of the refinement in the capital, right, because in. New fire station. What's the, is the ask for, you know, twenty million dollars now?
Exactly.
For fifteen thousand dollars to do a needs analysis. So we're, we're working on how we build it and base it.
And the other, I know we've talked about this before, but as I was just reflecting on this the other day, you know, we've made purchases. Of open spaces and affordable housing. Uh we've talked about this before, but I really think we need to. Continue with a plan exactly, you know, inventory and what we're gonna do. CMRPC is working with planning board, Jeremy, I believe. We need to talk with Bill to. Do the mapping that you've talked about in terms of parcel to use. So I think that uh. We should, I think, Jack and Bill said that's underway. So we're sort of riding their coattails to say. Come back to us for something. So maybe we'd follow up with Dylan and say, where's that ad?
Reminds me that we have talked at different points about something like a master plan implementation. Committee, but I mean, I think just revisiting the master plan periodically, you know, some of these things actually are in the master plan. So formally.
I would argue that everything you just went through tonight, particularly with the with the finances and all this, I mean, this is all the bedrock.
Right.
To implement that master.
Right. So I mean, I think, I I think, uh, but a way of formalizing our progress with the master plan. Which I know we can also revisit in our goals, in our. Like twenty six goal setting.
That would be interesting to know. Like our, you know, ten-year timeline.
Right.
Progress over the master plan and what we accomplished. When it would be time to refresh the master plan in some odd years, what we've.
Right.
Done a fair share of it.
Yeah. And I think, because I think, right, we have, there has been motion towards that in a lot of different areas, so. Be really good to track that. Um, okay. Any other future agenda items? Then uh next meeting, so our next meeting will be at the annual town meeting. Friday, May second, twenty twenty five, Eastern time, seven PM. So we'll be there.
But just throw out there, maybe you could get the committees that I know the QR code is a great idea. Maybe you get each committee to just do a slide in that pre-slide. You know, so we always have like a pre slideshow of some sort going on the screen. If they could just put a slide up about what their committee is.
I'm gonna probably put that QR code on the screen.
You just have it everywhere, so.
Yeah.
They can't miss it. Yeah.
And then uh following that, we're gonna be returning to our uh first and third Wednesdays of the month with May seventh and twenty first. At six thirty. So.
So.
Yes.
After that.
So I know um. Just gonna maybe wait a moment. So so is there anything else? Because I think so uh. So we do have, I hope, so we have an executive session on the agenda, and I guess the question is, um. So we're, we're not going to reconvene for actual sessions. So just make sure that we've covered everything that we need to in open session. We move into executive session. So um. All right. So uh I move to enter executive session under purpose one of the meeting law MGL chapter thirty A, section twenty one A one. To discuss the reputation, character, physical condition or mental health of an individual and not re, oh, sorry. Uh or to discuss the discipline or dismissal of or complaints or charges thrown against a public officer, employee, staff member or individual. And not reconvene in open session.
Second.
Discussion. We'll do a roll call vote. Uh all in favor, who goes aye?
Janelle, aye.
Goddard, aye. Cooter, aye.
We're all aye.
So then we will now uh be in executive session, so.
Yeah, we're going to uh leave this, we're gonna leave this room, we're gonna come this recording into this room and join the uh, we have several rooms in the executive session.